To order. We call the special meeting of the Board of Aldermen on Tuesday, September 24, 2019, to order at 6:45 here in the Aldermanic Chamber. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Susan Lovering.
Yay.
And the pledge will be led by Alderman Clea.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our citizens, so help us, God. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman Gidge.
Present.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Present.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Clea.
Here.
Alderman Laws. Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderwoman Kelly. Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderwoman Melissa Goya. Alderman Tenza. Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons. Alderman Woolshire.
Here.
We have a court of madam president.
Thank you. Alderwoman Kelly is not feeling well but won't be joining us this evening, and Alderwoman Melissa Goya is running a little late, but she will be here. Communications.
Communication has been received from Lori Woolshire, President, Nashville Board of Aldermen, regarding special Board of Aldermen meeting.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication and place it on file. Going to invite the Director of Administrative Services, Ms. Kleiner, to join us and give us an assessing update. Thank you for being here this evening.
Good evening, and thank you for inviting us to update you on all of the improvements that we have made to the assessing function. So last we were here, we are here at the end of April, and we presented you the improvement plan, which we've been working on hard. Before I begin, if you don't mind, I would like to introduce some of the assessing staff who have all joined us here this evening.
That'd be wonderful, thank you.
So if they'd stand. Louise Brown, the administrative supervisor. Greg Turges, commercial assessor. Amanda Maserol, administrative. Lynn Cameron, administrative specialist. Mike Mandiel, residential assessor. Doug Dame, commercial assessor. Gary Turges, residential assessor. And we also have the three members of the Board of Assessors with us, Mr. Paul Bergeron, Mr. Bob Early, and Mr. Dan Hansberry, who is currently serving as chair.
Thank you very much, that was nice to meet everyone.
So without the staff, this would not be possible. So this is their accomplishments, and I thank them for putting up with me every day. So the staffing level has remained the same since April, except we have had Karina Ocha join the administrative services office. She's the administrative assistant within my office. She not only provides support to me, but she also provides support to the department. This summer, we also had a junior from Nashville Senior High School, Alexandra Pickett, and she was part of the mayor's internship program, and she also assisted the department. You all know Pam Anderskevich, our GIS technician, who plays a very important role in the maintaining of property data through pictometry and GIS mapping, and Pam has joined us here this evening as well. And as you know, a few weeks ago, we presented a plan here to PEDC on all the important changes that are happening within GIS. Upon passing of legislation before you, assessing will hire a temporary assessor for three to six months, part-time, up to $20,000. We hope for your consideration in that legislation this evening. That is very important to us. So you saw this back in April. This was our assessing improvement mind map. This laid out for us the areas that we believed we would touch upon within the improvement plan. So I wanted to bring that back because you'll see a number of these areas discussed as we discuss the progress that's been made so far. So we put the progress into five key areas of improvement. Transparency, customer service, efficiency and data collection, procedures and communication, property data accuracy, and software program applications. There is a difference, which we'll explain later on, between property data accuracy and the data collection piece. So transparency within the department. In case you haven't noticed, our entire website page has been redesigned for easier navigation. The Popular Links button, which is a button right at the top in a row of blue buttons, provides additional tools and information added. The Residential Assessment Information Guide that was provided by KRT, the Understanding New Hampshire Property Taxes, explanation of your tax bill, understanding of your property card. So we've tried to make information readily available to taxpayers to help them understand the process. We've also provided online access to your property card, and this will be updated once a year. The card represents your December tax bill. This is the property tax card that we see within the assessing office. This is not the WebPro data that you used to see prior. If you want a current live property card, for some reason you think changes have been made, from the website, you can email, and we will email back a property record card to you with instructions on how to read it. Starting in August, we introduced the new newsletter, the Assessing Monitor. Issued monthly, it will provide a lot of important dates and deadlines, notices of changes and updates within the department. We want to make sure that during the full measure and list, we can push as much information to our residents as possible. That has been included in the RFP for the full measure and list. It will be very important. Residents can sign up for this newsletter on the website, and they will receive it by Our Board of Assessor meetings. So now our Board of Assessor meetings are held up in the auditorium. They are televised on Channel 16, recorded, available on YouTube. Minutes are verbatim and available on the website. We also created an email address for members of the public to contact the Board of Assessors. That email address goes to the entire board and myself in case there's a staff-level inquiry that needs to be investigated for them. Often, that address is not for conversation. It's much like the Board of Aldermen email address, but it does get to the board, and they can view the residence inquiry. So efficiency and data collection. One of the problems that came about was you generally had assessors calling residents and scheduling their own appointments. So as you can imagine, in today's busy society, they would call, often get the voicemail, and they'd have to leave a message and wait for the resident to call them back. The resident might call them back, they might be in the field. This kind of created a holdup in creating some of those appointments. So right now, we have the administrative staff, mostly Ms. Cameron, scheduling those appointments, and since she's here in the office, you don't have that telephone tag. And then the assessors can worry about getting out into the field and completing their appointments. As I mentioned earlier, the hiring of the temporary employee before you tonight. Why is this important? It's important because we had an increase in our workload not really anticipated come this September. So as you may know, we are working with the legal department and preparing a response to the BTLA. We are also working with the legal department on a number of appeals that have been filed with the BTLA and Superior Court. This takes time, it takes assessors' time to be in legal and to walk them through the files and some of the data. So this really arose, otherwise we would have brought this to you much earlier. But we're hoping that through the NHAO listserv and through contacts that we have with other assessors, that we'll be able to fill this position quickly. We are holding weekly assessor meetings. So this Monday, yesterday, we had Director Cummings with us from Economic Development. We are trying to increase the communication with other departments that may have information on development within the city. For instance, Director Cummings would have information on commercial properties and where they may be in their construction process. So to reach out and to use the information and the contacts that we have within the city to the best of our knowledge is important. We also discuss properties, consistency of methods, and we have a peer review on different properties and different assessments. We have reinstituted an updated sales letter. That is a questionnaire that is sent to residents to request and verify the details of their sale. Over this summer, over 1,179 have been mailed and 304 have been returned. And why is this important? Well, when we're going through the process of qualifying sales, it's important that we know what information may have been missed on the property card, what information about the sale and the property they can provide to us. So that's important, and we hope that residents will take the time to fill out the short survey and return it to us. We also instituted a letter of assessment change. So when a resident has a change in their assessment, over $20,000 due to data corrections, we are sending out a letter to inform them. It has been brought to us that some members of the public would like to see that change to a percentage. That's something that we're looking at, but for the time being, we have letters this year that have gone out for the $20,000, and we're going to maintain that for now. Research of best practices and consulting. So as many of you know, there was $50,000 included in the budget in assessing for consulting. This was important, especially when we eliminated the chief assessor job, and we are taking use of those funds. We are consulting with David Cornell, who's an assessing expert. He has been extremely helpful and very knowledgeable. And I have to say that assessing is a very special field. It is amazing how knowledgeable and how helpful assessors from different communities have been. They've reached out to let us know that they're there if we have any technical questions. They've provided their contact information to us, and we've taken use of that a few We are also, in the legislation before you, have the request for some tablets. And why the tablets are important is this is going to create efficiency within the department. We will load the new AssessPro 5 software onto the tablets. This will allow assessors to make real-time changes to our Kama system right out in the field. So currently, they have a property card, it's written, they make changes, and they write them down, they bring them back, and either they enter them into the system or the administrative staff helps and enters them into the system. So the changes that we can just incorporate right there in the field will provide efficiency. We also have a number of different areas where we're looking at efficiency now. We are looking at the property cards as we move to AP5, and we're trying to figure out what information needs to be added to the card, what information needs to maybe be removed from the card because it's not useful to the taxpayers, but it still needs to be seen by the assessors. So we're making those type of changes. We also have a property card revision notification. So we include the property card in the mailing to residents when an abatement is either approved or denied by the Board of Assessors. And this allows them to look at the property card and see if any data corrections have been made during that process, or to question maybe why the denial or the approval has been made. That was not done prior. Prior, they just received a letter. Procedures and communication. So in addition to the weekly assessor meetings, we also have a weekly meeting with all staff members. We review data, we review workload, we review procedures, changes in policies or directives, just general information that all of the staff needs to know. These are important, and these weren't being done, and this was an issue that we brought up during the management audit. You need to have widespread communication within any function, and they've been very useful. There have been times, I will admit, especially during the abatement process in July, that the abatements took first slot, and we actually had to postpone some of our weekly staff meetings because the assessors had appointments and needed to be out in the field. So during July, we did a lot of catch-up and passing information from word of mouth, but those abatements had to be done, and that was our priority. I am also providing departmental updates to the Board of Assessors at each meeting. These are generally in writing. I think I may have shared a couple of them with the Board of Aldermen, especially when it was talking about the number of abatements and things that we were having, but of course, you can find them in the review of minutes from the Board of Assessors meeting. The Board of Assessors are currently undergoing a review of their bylaws. So as you know, we had the appointment by Mayor Donches of Mr. Bergeron this summer, and after he joined the Board, they began reviewing their bylaws, and they're currently in that process. So it has been asked how there is any control of assessment changes within the department, what type of review and audit is being undertaken. So there is a report, it's called an Assessment Audit Report, and both Louise Brown and I have access to that, and we run that periodically. I'm informed of assessment changes over $20,000. As I said, we have these weekly assessor meetings, we discuss large cases, but I also run these audit logs, and I review those. And what do they tell me? They tell me the change that's been made to any building, the change that's been made to any land, and the change in total. So if I have questions, if any of those look like I need to inquire on further information, I do, and the assessors walk me through those changes. So you may have heard of a procedure manual that was just introduced to the Board of Assessors in September. It was reviewed by David Cornell, our assessing expert. I stated during the meeting at the Board of Assessors that this was a live document, and it will be amended. So with the new AssessPro 5 software, there will be a number of changes required, and one of the changes that was specified in the management audit report was the moving away from the EYB, or effective year built, for depreciation. We brought that up, it was a recommendation in the management audit report. It's a discussion that we're currently having with Patriot Properties, and it is included in the RFP for the full measure and list. So I did not want to undertake changes to a procedure manual when I know that this is going to be addressed in the full measure and list. The current policy is as-is. We did not revise the policy for the EYB or for the grade and the conditions to the bathrooms and the kitchens. That will all be handled then. We also continue to consult with David Cornell on best practices, and changes will be made to the manual as we find best practices not only suggested by he, but other communities that we are just talking with. We are undergoing rotating attendance at the New Hampshire AAO meetings by assessors. This provides them continuous education. There is an education portion of those meetings. This past month, Mr. Turges and I attended, and the education session was on utility valuation, and that was given by Scott Bartlett. So as they hold their meetings each month, we will rotate the assessors so all the assessors have a chance to get this information, bring it back to our weekly assessors' meetings, and discuss it and share it with all. So we have binders that we have created for the Board of Assessor meetings. So assessing is an interesting function because it's very paper-dependent. There's a large amount of paper that is processed through the assessing department. So you can imagine, when you have 40 abatements going to the Board of Assessors for consideration, and it's a bunch of loose papers or papers that are just paper-clipped, they're trying to get through this big packet, and they're trying to have residents join them, we felt there just needed to be some organization provided for them to assist them. It also, I will admit, it assists me in following the meeting, and now we're doing one for the legal representative that's at the meeting as well, and one for staff to share. It does, it has helped very much with the flow and the organization of the meeting. They take relatively little time to produce. These are also done and used for, actually where I got the idea was, the Board of Public Works binders. I think that organization and having a good flow of the meeting is important, especially when it's televised, and we want to make sure that things aren't omitted or missed. So I think in July, when we had all the abatements, was probably when it took the most time to prepare these binders. Normally, half an hour tops to create these binders for a normal meeting, but they're extremely helpful. During the management audit, we discussed the lack of mileage reporting, and we had stated back then that this had already been looked at and had been addressed. This continues. They have to, the assessors, fill out a mileage report, they attach their field log, it's required by all assessors, it's reviewed and approved by myself. I also receive all of the schedules that are created by the administrative staff, and I can always compare against those schedules as well. Property data accuracy. So by far, this is one of the most important things that I could discuss tonight with you. We have requests for proposals currently out there. That request was posted on September 5th, I'm sorry, on August 28th. On September 5th, we held a pre-proposal meeting. This was non-mandatory. We had two firms attend, Vision Government Solutions and Tyler Technologies. On September 9th was the deadline for any questions to be submitted to the city, and on September 11th, we posted any answers to those questions. This Friday, sorry, this Thursday, responses are due to the city by 3:00 PM. I can tell you to date, as of this morning, none had been received, so we are hoping that everyone is waiting until the last moment. We have put together a team to review the proposals that are submitted. We're including purchasing, members of assessing, CFO Griffin, Director Cummings, Celia Leonard, to review these proposals. Then we will choose a couple that we will invite in to speak with us and to rate. Ultimately, we hope to have a decision made as quickly as possible so that we can bring the contract forward to both finance and to the Board of Aldermen, considering that it's a multi-year endeavor. I note here again, because this is very critical, the EYB, the effective year built. We know there's been a lot of discussion on this. When CFO Griffin and I conducted the management When CFO Griffin and I conducted the Management Audit, we held meetings with different assessing experts. And we discussed this with the President of Patriot Properties. And we let you know at that time that although the EYB method was used, now back when we installed the software back in the 90s, I mean, it was a commonly-used approach. That's not the case now. It's not best practice. And we hope that through the RFP process, with the firms getting into as many homes as possible, we will be able to move away from that Effective Year Built. So, it's critical that we get into as many homes as we possibly can. And we're going to provide the public with as much information and make them feel as comfortable as possible. We will also have members of staff that can answer any questions. And we will be using the newsletter to push information on where they may be concentrating and when, so that residents have a heads-up on the areas of the city that we may be, that the firm may be in. But, you know, it's been a long time since the city has undergone a full measure and list and a revaluation. And we really need to make the best and make sure that this is important data collected for the city. So, in April, when I came to you, I did not recommend an upgrade from Assess Pro Classic to Assess Pro 5 this summer. I had actually pushed it out and said that we hoped to do it in 2020. Things change every day in assessing. And what we found was, in order for us to move the exemptions and credits from the admin system, which is the old system, which we told you we would do this summer, that was not going to be possible with our current version of Assess Pro. That, together with the very different information and the highlights and the benefits that the Assess Pro 5 version offers, we met with Patriot and they decided, they agreed that they could do it. And so, with the help of information technology, we decided that we would undergo it. And so far, it's been going well. We have completed general training. We are moving on now to more specific user one-on-one training. So, administrative staff needs to know different information than our assessors need to know. So, that would be user-specific training. We believe that the benefits of Assess Pro 5 are going to provide us with a lot of increased efficiency within the department. So, not only will it provide an abundance of screens for us to put important data that have been limited in the past, but the Assess Pro 5 provides for a role-based security, which is not current in the Assess Pro Classic. So, it's important that when you have any system, that your security within the system is really limited to the role that that individual plays. So, that has been an issue that Assess Pro Classic didn't address as well as Assess Pro 5. And you can see there, there's a number of other benefits. There's the ability for a multi-year architecture, meaning currently, we cannot go in and create or enter changes that are for the following tax year. We have to wait until the present tax year has been rolled and the file's been captured. That may be a series of weeks that we're not entering data. This system provides for a multi-year, where you can actually go in and update a prior year or a future year, depending on what is needed. So, that's another important function. We have, right now, IT is working on a number of projects. And they are all interrelated. So, not only do we have the upgrade from Assess Pro Classic, we also have, within the Building Department and others, a permitting change from City View to Civic Gov. So, if you may have noticed, up in the auditorium, there's computers set up and staff from the Building Department has been up there training on Civic Gov this week. We hear mid-October, they should be up and running completely. That makes changes in the way that the Building Department communicates with the assessing department. So, now, what IT refers to as a bridge needs to be written between the Assess Pro 5 and the new Civic Gov. And that needs to be tested and evaluated. We also have the changes within GIS. So, GIS has transferred over to new servers. And we have the creation of the GIS Steering Committee, an adoption of the strategic plan that was recommended in the report presented to you by C.D.M. Smith. So, Building, GIS, Assessing, it's a large number of changes occurring. We're very thankful for the IT Department and their support. But there's a lot of testing and a lot of training that is required by a number of different departments. So, on top of all the changes, on top of all the training, what are we currently working on? So, this is a list provided for you of what our administrative staff is currently working on. We're preparing for the MS-1. And many of you may have heard from Finance and Budget Meetings that we filed for an extension of the MS-1. And our new deadline is October 11th. Of course, the AP-5 training and testing. They're continuing an audit of our veterans' credits. They are updating our Assess Pro with BTLA and Superior Court abatement appeals and responding to BTLA checklists that are required for those appeals. They're processing property transfers and name changes and filing. Everything that is normal within the administrative staff function continues. And it has not slowed down. They provide excellent customer service. And I can tell you that I've had a number of residents come to me. And I'm very, very proud of the customer service that the administrative staff provides. And some of you may have heard that as well. I was at the DRA in a training last week. And I heard it up there from members of the DRA on some of our staff members. And they are really looked at as some of the experts in their field. And quite often, they're called from other communities for questions and answers to things. They also print and process all the monthly building reports and, of course, schedule the assessors and complete the data entry when they return. And they QC all of the information that is entered by our assessors. What are the assessors working on right now? Well, you've all heard, pickup of building permits for file capture prior to October 11th. That's the number-one function right now. They also have a sales qualification. That's mandatory for the DRA ratio study. They provide responses to petitions of the appeals at the Hillsboro Superior Court in the BTLA. They work very closely with legal on all of those cases. They answer taxpayers' requests for inspections and inquiries, work on the ongoing litigation that I mentioned. They review the exemptions and the credit applications and sign off on those. They have their own review of the MS-1 that is required. And they have their own training for AP-5. So, while all this was happening, we processed in 2019 for 2018, 406 abatements. And I'm sure, as the Board of Assessors can attest, this kept us quite busy. They had all these appear before them. Approved was 171 and denied was 213. 22 PSNH remain with legal. They also had a total of 959 exemptions to process. So, these are applications that require a great deal of examination of documents and to make sure that they have completed all the information and that they can give a recommendation to the Board of Assessors. We have, so far, received, to the BTLA, six residential taxpayers' appeals and 52 commercial. I think that speaks somewhat to the success of the revaluation when you only have six appeals to the BTLA. But that's my own opinion. To Superior Court, we have 28 commercial currently. And that number includes PSNH. We, this is a project that we brought to you in April. We talked about how the assessing office really needed to undergo a redesign. This plan was created. It was reviewed by City Buildings and the Risk Department. We will work towards cost estimates, but it will require an RFP. The main purpose is really the customer service that the office provides. So, currently, the office is not handicapped accessible. And neither is there a lot of information for assisting taxpayers at the counter. Some of the information that we discuss during an exemption or an appeal or a credit is information on income. These residents may not feel comfortable discussing this out in a general customer service area. So, the plan does include creating a couple of cubicles within the conference room in assessing so that these discussions could be held more privately. Currently, they are taking these residents out into the hallway if they need to sit and review. And we would recommend that that's probably not best practice. So, this will have more information to come. But as City Buildings looks at the plan and does some more measurements and an RFP is put together, we will bring that back. This is not a result, all this work is not a result of just the assessing department, although they have worked extremely hard. We have to thank the mayor for his support, the Board of Assessors, of course, all of you. The IT Department has been instrumental. The legal department, of course. The tax department, CFO Griffin and his department. Risk and City Buildings, Mr. Budrow and his staff in HR. Purchasing and Director Cummings in Economic Development. As I mentioned earlier, David Cornell has provided a wealth of information. I know it has been stated probably many times before you that I am not an assessor. That is true. But I am fortunate to have good people around me that have reached out and are providing help to us, including David Cornell, Patriot Properties, KRT, Mr. Gagny from Manchester, Mr. Reese from Portsmouth, and other assessors. So, I have to thank them for all of their support. And I know that our assessors also help them. This is how the assessing function has really worked for a number of years. It's a very close-knit group throughout the state. And they often rely on each other when they have questions. And I would remain that that's always best practice. But we have a ways to go. We have continued improvements in efficiency that is going to take place. We want this to be sustainable change. We know that as new management practices will need to be reinforced and nurtured. We also know that, as we discussed with you back in April, we promised to have the discussion on whether the chief assessor role is one that needs to be explored again. So, you know, as we look to the future, there's going to be a lot of continued discussion. We hope to bring a lot more back to you and update you. But there are a number of items that we are still evaluating. And we hope that you'll bear with us. This is a process.
That's all, Madam. Thank you, Director Klein. I appreciate your thoroughness and your presentation and bringing your staff in. I want to thank them for being here as well. Thank you. Alderman Clea.
Thank you very much. I want to make a statement. And then, I just have one real quick question for you. Today, I was up in the State House, part of my committee. And we're, I'm on a subcommittee to review veterans' tax credits and exemptions. In doing so, I spoke with people from the DRA and from the New Hampshire Municipal Association. And that's why I knew that you had taken the training with others. But the one thing I want to give a shout-out to, and that's to Louise Brown, I was told that the boots on the ground and the expert to give me the information I need resides right here in Nashua, in our own assessing department. And while she did not know who the counterpart was that in Manchester, Louise was the go-to person that she recommends to everybody. So, I'd like to thank Louise for her work and everything that she does. The question that I have is, when you did that little assessing 101, one of the things that kind of came out was that our property size went down a little tiny bit. And that was because, I think, Mr. Turges had explained to us that the state came in and kind of redid the boundary line slightly. And when you talk about the $20,000, of course, I was, it was so tiny, it wouldn't have hit $20,000. But is that beyond someone going into assessing? Could something like that happen if we got a correction from the state or anything else like that?
So, currently, the letters are being issued if your total assessment has changed more than $20,000. It has been brought up- It has been brought up at a Board of Assessor meeting by a resident. Could it be a percentage of assessment? And that's not, that's a pretty good idea. Because ideally, you could have lower-assessed properties with families that a change in their tax situation may actually affect more. We're going to look at that. What I don't want to do is, we're moving to the Assess Pro 5, and I want to figure out how we can automate these processes. So that's a process that's easily automated within Assess Pro 5, and that has percentages. So it's not that we're not taking residents' ideas. We are, but we're in that crucial time where we're moving from one software to another. We could look to see if there's the ability to automate a letter on a change. I would assume it was a change to your deed.
Yeah, I think that's the way it came in. I wrote it down, and I think it was, no, I guess I didn't write it down here, something like the HS, something. It was the HCRD or something like that.
Okay, I'm sure.
That changed, and it brought the, actually brought the property line down a little bit. But, President, may I just ask? Okay. The other question I have, which is my biggest concern of everything you did, what happens if Thursday comes and we don't get any? Do we throw it out again?
Yes. Yes, we do. I would hope that maybe some of the firms that attended the pre-bid meeting might be willing to give us some reasons why. Was there something in the RFP that, you know, specifically? I think that the RFP, it is very thorough. So we're asking for a lot of communication, and we're expecting them to make continuous entries to get into the homes. So I'm really thinking that's not going to happen. Purchasing has assured me this morning, when they told me that, that it's common for RFPs to come in that afternoon, all at once. So I'm going with that.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Alderman, go ahead.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion is to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we are adjourned at 7:38. We'll take two minutes for us to start our regular meeting.